Okay, thank you. This is a meeting of the Rowland Town Select Board. Our regular meeting today is Tuesday, July 16th. It's little one, two minutes after six. We'll start our meeting, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. Um, we have select board members Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcraft, Matt Geddy. On the phone is Sharon Russell and um, we might see Kurt, I don't know.
You never know.
But for right now, the four of us and we have a quorum, so let's get started. We have approval of minutes. First, we have the June 18th minutes and present there were me, Sharon, and Matt to make a quorum. So is there any motion on the minutes for June 18th?
To approve.
Motion's been made to approve Sharon's seconds. Additions, deletions, corrections? If not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Sharon, are you an aye?
I did, aye.
Okay, thank you. So the minutes are approved. And Joe Donardo abstained. Okay, next are the minutes of the
Yeah, we can't do this.
July 2nd meeting. I wasn't here. Oh.
We can't do it.
We need Kurt Hathaway in order to approve these, so we'll put those off until he arrives or until we meeting.
One has two thirds done, so.
Okay. Alright, so put that in the folder. Okay, um, are there any board member announcements? Nope. Update from the chair. It's good to be home. Ireland was lovely. Questions from the floor or public comments from anyone who is not otherwise on the agenda for tonight? Hand is raised. Don Chaffee.
Yes, thank you, Mary. And for board members of my, and for anyone that's listening. I am the delinquent tax collector and I thought I'd give you an update so that you have correct information in front of you. I guess there were a number of figures thrown around last meeting, but these figures are directly from our town treasurer's office. For the last fiscal year, and the reason I'm giving you these this evening is that we've, we've finished the fiscal year. As of, as of June 30th, we're starting, we're starting a new collection year and collections are going very well for the time period involved. I mean, it's, I've just sent the first letter out. The last fiscal year, we had principal amounts of taxes collected of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two. There's some sense, but that's, those are the round figures. That's the principal amount. The interest collected, which also goes to the town is thirty-two thousand, six ninety-nine, for a total of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one. So as, as I learned from your last meeting that you, you had budgeted, because I didn't look at the town report, but you had budgeted a hundred thousand of income and so we have three hundred and fifty-two, eight, eighty-two, almost three hundred and fifty-three thousand. So for your, for your information, that's the amount that you have in surplus. Just wanted to. I'd like, you know, it's good to have the accurate figures and and of course, we don't, we don't know, Mary, you know, the problem is you don't know, well, you really don't know what the delinquency is going to be year, year from year. You can make, you can make a reasonable prediction, but I think, I think a hundred thousand is, is a little bit off based on the, the characteristic amounts that come in each year are substantially above a hundred thousand.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at those numbers when we start our budgeting process. So, and thank you for your work, Don. That's good news.
Okay, have a great meeting.
Okay, Matt's got a question for you.
Well, just a comment, Don, just so you know, um, this issue did come up in budgeting for the current fiscal year. And I think we had looked at what recent delinquency collections were and determined, I think it had been typically around what you've had this year. And like you say, we don't, we don't ever know what it's going to be, but it seemed like it would be reasonable to increase that number, which we did. And I don't remember off the top of my head what the number was, but we did increase it so that we wouldn't be, you know, underestimating and ending up with more surplus and so forth. So we did think about that. We'll have to look at it again this fall and see how accurate we were.
Well, I, you know, I, I would compliment you because I think it's always good to be on the conservative side when you're doing your estimations. I mean, you're always better off to have a little bit left over that as a cushion as opposed to assuming that you're going to get a lot more.
Right, which is not an assumption we want to have come true anyways, because it just means people aren't worth it.
No, no, no. And, and to be honest with you, the, the reason, one of the reasons for that large an amount was that there were, there were a couple, couple of fairly substantial commercial accounts that I, I kind of worked a little bit harder on and you know, when you get up into the thirty-five, forty, fifty thousand dollar range, that kind of adds to the total pretty quickly. But as far as the residential accounts, they're pretty much standard and, and most of them do come in over the period of time. Some of them are classically delinquent and we just keep working on them, but most of them are paying on agreements with me and and have in the past had agreements with previous tax collectors. So we work with them and, you know, try to, try to get them current if we can, but I don't anticipate, you know, unless the economy really takes a, a real serious downturn. And we do have to worry this year, as you're well aware, we're in this situation where you know, the, the educational tax is going up and I don't know what the municipal is going to be. You'll come to that decision here pretty quickly, but you know, as taxes rise in the town, obviously you expect that there's going to be some more delinquencies. How many more? I don't know. I guess we'll just have to see, but.
So, Don, we'll check in with you as we start putting the budgets together and see where your numbers might be in another, oh, you know, four, five, six months. So that's helpful information and we appreciate it. So thank you.
Well, under statute, I'm, I'm obligated to report to you sooner than that, so I'll keep you updated on a couple, on a monthly or a couple monthly basis. So you know.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other folks participating here who are not otherwise on the agenda and would like to be heard? Looking at the board and don't see any other hands raised. So let's move on to our agenda. John Paul Fagnant, Town Health Officer, Public Safety Board Clerk and Second Constable, and we have action items B and C to discuss with you as well as your report. So welcome.
Good evening. What's this, Mary? I'll start with the constable job first. I've expressed a concern to the Highway Department through Joe that with the reconfiguration of Route 7 North, ending at Lincoln Avenue, is going to turn Route 7 North from Lincoln Avenue to the East Pittsford Road into a racetrack if it continues to be striped as two lanes in each direction. It seemed to me, as I've been watching the traffic in that area, it's already one of the spots in town that has the most aggressive driving. People taking the East Pittsford Slip Lane to get one position better going north, but the speeds are getting up to sixty-five, seventy miles an hour to accomplish that. I think it's going to get worse if it's because it would not be two lanes coming out of the city and two lanes going in. It's only going to be two lanes in each direction. It won't be four lanes. So I mentioned to Joe that maybe we should consider approaching the state and ask them to take into consideration our concern that that's going to turn that intersection, which is one of the primary intersections that leads to our school into a more dangerous situation than it currently is.
How would you change it?
We would obviously have to get involved with the state engineers. I don't know how they planned on blending that lane reduction as you come out of the city, but I do have an appointment with the Agency of Transportation next week to look at that, to see what that looks like and make the suggestion that they look at the safety of continuing that.
So you're going to have lane reduction initially north of Route 4, right? And then once you hit the town line, it goes back to two.
No, we're, we're talking Route 7.
Yeah, I understand. I was, I'm talking about as you're coming out of the city.
Right.
At some point, it's, it's one lane in the city and then it's going back to two lanes in town.
And it breaks into two lanes and then it goes back to one lane as soon as you get north of the East Pittsford Road. And there's going to be a lot of passing and a lot of high speed in there.
That's the area that concerns me. It doesn't make.
One of the things we talked, JP and I talked about was proposing maybe to the state to keep the left turn lane. It, it would have to kind of blend a little to the right, but keep that left turn lane beyond McKinley. So it stays one northbound lane and then have that dissipate at about the end of the guardrails by Mr. Twitters. And then at that point, it would go to two lanes with the left lane being a through lane and the right lane being for post road and East Pittsford Road. And, and if it was well marked and delineated, you know, hopefully that would, because otherwise what, what's going to happen is what JP said is the frustrated people that are following Joey through the city at thirty-five miles an hour or anybody else that's driving the speed limit, as soon as that goes to two lanes, they're going to whip over in the right lane and they're gone. Yep. And somebody's going to want to be turning right and there's going to be a lot of, lot of problems there.
So you're going to be talking with AOT?
Yeah, I'll follow up with them and report again, but I just wanted to get that on your radar screen so to see if it's something.
Highway Committee too, maybe.
Yeah.
Should be involved. So good. Okay, thank you.
Under Health Officer, um, the other, last week I did a survey of the number of unregistered vehicles in the parking lot. There's more than twenty-five. Under Vermont law, you can't have more than four or you're considered a junkyard. So I don't know what the board's pleasure would be in that regard if you wanted to start an enforcement action or report them to the state, but I would look for your direction on that.
Does it make a difference to the law, who owns the vehicles?
No.
If it's, they don't have to belong to the owner of the property, they just have to be on their property and.
Unregistered. Yeah. And in public view, which these are. There's half a dozen campers that are trashed and could never be habitable, but you can tell.
Are they, are they habited?
What you can tell by looking in them, you know, clear viewers are being used for drug use. There's needles around and stuff like that, so.
So would you do this as health officer or constable?
The enforcement action? I don't know. I have to give that some thought.
Okay. Let's alert our town attorney.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And what does that enforcement ultimately look like? We have to go in and remove the stuff.
You have to give a notice of inspection. Then you have to have the inspection where they are there with their representatives. You view the situation and you decide how you're going to handle it. It, it's pretty easy. I mean, you're not supposed to have more than four and they've got twenty-five.
Well, yeah, the question becomes what happens when they ignore you and it remains.
Well, you're told. Oh, we don't know. You, you, the statute gives you the authority to remove the vehicles.
And, and send them the bill.
Right.
Where would the? Campers are going to be expensive to get rid of because no one's been told. There's not much, there's no money. It costs them to get rid of them. This is similar to what Bridge Housing does. If you're not, if your vehicle is registered with Bridge Housing and has permission to park there and it's there and you're not permission, it gets towed. I mean, that makes perfect sense. There's no issues at the Bridge Housing, it sucks at me because they enforce the rules up there heavily. This is just a rule that.
It's been winked at. Yep. All right, let me, I'm doing a list for Kevin. Which brings me back to how are we on enforcement of the back doors being locked so they don't provide entry?
They're still not secure.
Okay, so that's another Kevin issue.
Right? I said, nothing's been done.
It's been over four years.
Four years, but you know, the last contract that we signed and did was, is almost a year old already.
That item is on Kevin's list already.
So I actually had a, a guest of the Cortina blame the town for the drug problem down there because in their view, we allow the back doors to be open and that's the only way the drugs get in the facility. And because we haven't installed the alarm bars that we're responsible for the drug culture that's evolving down there.
It's all on us, eh?
Yeah. If they didn't need the emergency exits, I'd tell them to block them off. Yeah. Be the end of it. It would be a big first step towards top, stopping the drug distribution.
Okay.
Moving on to Clerk of the Works, I just want to give you a little forecast of where we are in terms of, of the project and its cost. As you know, we started off with a, a contingency fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and with site and various associated costs, that's been reduced to fifty-one thousand dollars right now, about fifty-one thousand, six hundred. Now, we took advantage of some developments at the site to, excuse me, just a minute.
Good things and bad things. I have in your phone go through your hearing aids. The bad thing is you can't hear anything when the phone's ringing.
Okay, um, so the site changes, the total site changes that we were able to take advantage of added eighty-two thousand dollars, eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars to the project. We also had a, the rejection of a grant for about seventy thousand dollars for Royals. So those cost overruns are about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the contingency fund. You subtract the fifty-one that's in there, so we're looking right now at approximately a hundred thousand dollars that we have not budgeted for in the project. One of the items, obviously Royals, was a disappointment. We kind of had indications that that would be a goal. So when we did the budget for the building, we included that as a grant recipient, which it now is not going to be. I've authorized Ted to go ahead and sign on because Royals, that's the security package for the building and it's a necessary component of it. So we're going to have to maybe perhaps look for in the capital improvement fund to fund these additional expenses, but I mean, I'm pretty happy about the site. Look, I'd rather not have run into the site problems, but if you look at that versus the cost of having to acquire a piece of property and develop it, we're still far ahead for the taxpayers than we ever would be. So that's currently the.
You have a require, we are facing a request to release more of the contingency fund.
Retainage.
The retainage, sorry, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. That's something that I thought you would want to discuss.
You want to do it in executive session?
Yes.
All right. Is that agreeable? Okay, so we'll hold it until we get toward the end. Are you going to be around for a while?
I'll hang out for it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there were some items last time. I think that we're coming out of the contingency. Is that fifty-one thousand, six hundred after those items were accounted for?
So the listing that I got from, yeah, the general contractor, that's where I'm pulling those numbers from. I'm pulling the, the, everything that's been documented so far is one ninety-eight, three seventy-four, leaving fifty-one, six twenty-six.
Okay, and then the other thing I was wondering about from your email about this grant. You know, I, I didn't remember that grant being discussed, so I was thinking that perhaps that was a cost that that included in the budget with the hope for a grant. Are you saying that we were expecting the grant, therefore we didn't budget for that?
Correct. We, we included the figure without a contingency that the grant could get rejected.
The one grant we did have that we have received is the Homeland Security Grant for the Emergency Management Center, and that was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We've received it, I believe.
Right, right, but we did the same thing with that. I mean, you know, in retrospect, we wouldn't, we do.
Outlined as a possible.
Yeah.
So yeah, yeah. And, no, okay. Alrighty, okay. Any questions, Sharon? Any questions for JP?
No, the only thing I wanted to comment on with the traffic issue that he mentioned is I, I have sat many mornings waiting to get out of my driveway. I go to work two days a week at the commission and I've waited fifteen minutes sometime. One guy swerved into the breakdown lane and almost clipped my car. It is getting treacherous out here. Just, just so you know.
JP, a while back, you talked to us about a town adopting an ordinance that mirrored the state statutes on health officer duties and health officer authority, right?
Yes.
Where are, did we send that to Kevin?
Did, and I think that's on Kevin's list.
It's on the radar. That's up there.
I've just added a title list.
Okay, because if I understand that properly, if we adopt that ordinance that will empower you to, to do more things that you thought you could do that the state says you can't.
It would allow me to do the things I could do before they changed the law and take it away.
Right, which, which would help with some of the problems we're having at the Cortina.
Yes, it would.
Yeah. Do we have any, other than the contract with Cortina to get those doors secured? Do we have any other avenues? Is there anything else we can do?
You know, I, I've taken it all the way up the chain that I have to report to on the health officer side of it.
Because I, I know when those folks were in here from the state, I know they wanted us to be, they wanted to get on the good side of us and they were telling us things that I knew would never happen, but one of the things that was brought up was the state not backing you or not allowing you to do your job. And I think the fellow that was the most interested is either director, he was high up the food chain there. Secretary. And I don't know if he has ever been made aware of this and whether or not, because this, like you said, this is a four-year ongoing thing that those doors are the biggest problem down there. And I don't know, is there a point where the, for the public safety or the good of the people in there that the town could do something? I, I just don't know what we can do at this point. I mean, I don't know, the doors are.
We can enforce the contract we have.
Right, but, but I, I, if we were dealing with people that cared, then enforcing the contract would probably be a reasonable path. These folks have shown a dedicated opposition to caring. They just don't care. We have asked and we've asked and we've asked and they just don't.
There's an outstanding health officer order that of course was muted by the change of law, but after the explosion, you'll recall.
Yeah.
We identified those doors as a problem area.
Yeah, and, and so four years into this, this is unsatisfactory. So I think that if we could report this maybe to the state, to the secretary fellow that seemed concerned, get somebody down there. They need to put some leverage on those people and.
Yeah, that's not bad because we can follow up with him to see what, where they are with the MOU that they were going to.
There's a lot of stuff they were going to do.
We haven't heard back from them, so it'd be good to hear back from them.
Um, I think we need to really keep pushing this at the state level with the people that are doling out the cash.
Yeah.
That, you know, put these people in compliance because if they, if they're really not just lip service to us that we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and they actually have some credibility or they want to show they have some credibility, those doors should be done. You put those doors with no outside fixtures, nothing, just a panic bar on the inside and alarmed because the people inside that want the drugs are going to open the doors.
That's what's happening.
Right, and so.
These are also on Kevin's list.
Yeah.
These items are on Kevin's list.
I know, but I mean, like I say, we, we, we really need to, I, I'm just annoyed.
I like the idea of going to the state officials who were here and
Right.
expressed willingness to work with us.
Yeah, yeah, we're two months down the road and nothing's changed.
Tell us where you are.
Okay, thanks JP.
Okay, thank you. Good idea, Joe.
Yeah, we went to the wild.
All right, is Barbara Nois pulling on for the planning commission?
Mary.
Sharon?
Yeah, I just didn't know the Town Health Officer recommendation form. Are we going to do that?
Oh, 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 thank you, thank you. Um, so we actually it, it wasn't you. So, um, we have two items, actually. I shouldn't have let you sit down. We have the Town Health Officer Recommendation Form for reappointment and your name has been typed in, so are you okay with being reappointed to this?
You have been volunteered.
I asked them first.
Okay, just checking. So is there a motion from the board to, and we recommend to the Department of Health? Is that a motion, Sharon?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Sharon's so moved. Is there a second?
I'll sec, I'll second it. Sharon, are you authorizing the board chair to sign on behalf of the town?
Yeah.
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 Only one signature.
Yeah, I know. There's only one signature.
So are we also authorizing, Mary, to make up the explanation, the brief statement noting why we believe that to recommend individual will make a good health officer? The bill did not fill in.
Okay, sure. I can do that. He has been acting health officer and has, has been acting for several years as health officer. And Bill, if you could, I mean, I could write it down here.
I can add it in, it's okay.
Okay, and has performed the job well and competently and we would like to retain his good work. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to recommend JP as Town Health Officer for another term and to have me sign authorizing the same. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Sharon just said aye. Okay, motion carries.
We also neglected his higher education on the.
I have to put down his higher education. Okay. Have you been doing, no, you haven't been doing CLEs lately, have you? You haven't had to.
I actually did.
Did you?
Yeah, re-upped again.
Did you? Wonderful, okay. Okay, and the other under action needed, the security camera expense for the public safety building. Do you need our approval on that? Or I think you said you had passed along the approval because it was part of the initial.
Yeah, we can't have it. We don't meet the requirements for it without it. So I did authorize Ted, but yes, the board approval would be appreciated as well.
So is there a motion?
Some.
Motion's been made and seconded by Sharon to approve the security camera expense even though there's no supporting grant for it. Discussion, kind of discussed it before. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And Sharon votes aye, so it's unanimous. And then we're going to do the retainage amount discussion in executive session. So now you're free.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Barbara, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't have too much tonight. We are working on River Corridor bylaw language again, even though it's going to be mandatory statewide, but I think one of the primary reasons for still going for it right now are the disaster relief monies that may go away when it goes statewide. A lot of that still needs to be determined, but regardless, we're going to. A lot of that still needs to be determined. But regardless, we're gonna, we're going to put an ordinance together. But first, we're going to do some outreach, and we'll start with a townwide celebration and do a River Corridor presentation there. And and then take it, see how that goes, and then maybe take it on the road some other places.
Okay.
The other night at our meeting, we did have a discussion about a temporary driveway on the East Pittsburgh Road that has surprised a lot of residents. It's a parcel that belongs to Colonial Estates. And the owner asked for permission to go directly onto East Pittsburgh Road, which you know, a lot of members of the Planning Commission didn't think that was the the best idea. We're hoping that it is temporary. But we have a couple of requests of you and of Dave. You know, we we want to extend the invitation for him to come to any of our meetings and explain some of these requests that he gets and and maybe ask what we think about them. And we would like the Select Board to give us permission to look at the the streets and sidewalk ordinance and maybe the the driveway permit, the driveway installation permit, to see if we should. I don't think the Planning Commission is included in in either of those documents. You know, any, any discussion by the group or any presentation to the group. So that may be one thing we want to look at, and maybe some enforcement as well, because, you know, we we've got this temporary permit. It's supposed, it is expiring in November. And our fingers are crossed that everything goes back to where it was and that that lot accesses Georgiana Drive up on the hill. It's a steep lot. It's being totally logged right now. And and it's, we we just didn't know anything about it. So we're we're hoping to maybe change that, change a few things in those documents.
Request is of the Select Board to authorize the Planning Commission to take a look at the existing ordinances on sidewalks, driveways, and curb cuts, and perhaps make suggestions. Is that, have I stated that correctly?
Yeah, and then Bill put together a driveway permit, driveway installation permit. So if we could look at that, too, and and see if if we would have.
What's the feeling of the Select Board?
They need our permission. I mean, I'm not.
They're asking for it.
We're not, well, I I could just see, having come on the board in the middle of the short-term ordinance, short-term rental ordinance confusion, I could see how this could boomerang. Like, we're not asking you specifically to do anything. It's fine with me if you, if they want to look at something, but I just, if a proposal comes back, and then we say, no, I don't want to hear that, like, we asked them to do it.
Okay. Fair enough.
It's my understanding they did not get a permit, or did they? Yeah, I didn't think they did.
He, it's a little complicated. It's subject to Act two fifty.
Right.
So the permission that was granted was for a temporary driveway, but our, but it still does not remove his obligation to request that permission from Act two fifty. Our permit approval and our ordinance says that our permission does not override other authority for this, for the same thing. So if we're okay with it, doesn't mean that he gets just do it. He has to go to Act two fifty, which he knows about. And installed it, installed it anyway. So there, there's, there's, this, this is a, this is a kind of a unique scenario. But Dave and I have been in communication about it pretty, pretty consistently.
Yeah, so Dave, so, looks like he wants to comment. Dave?
Yeah, if you, if you lose me, we're getting crashed the thunderstorm here in Addison County. So the, basically, the reason for the temporary permit is they're, like Barbara said, they are logging the property. It's, it's very steep, and they're going to have to get trucks in there to get the logs out. And they requested to come out on the East Pittsburgh Road, rather than drive log trucks to the Colonial Drive community, which isn't really designed for trucks. So, you know, we made a compromise. They wanted to go until January first. I wasn't really comfortable with that with winter and everything. So we compromised, and they're going to, they assured me that they will take out the culvert in the driveway and return all that stuff back to original by November one. So it was really, uh, I, I don't want to say safety, because I, I think that's an overreach, but it it was for concern about log trucks running through that community. It is in the far east corner of that development. So in order to get there, these trucks are going to have to traverse a rather large percentage of that neighborhood. So in my opinion, it was better to have them mount onto East Pittsburgh Road, which is fairly straight in that section. Not really a safety concern, that I can see. There's plenty of sight distance. So that's kind of how we got there. You know, we, we did this before for a guy that was removing some trees up on Quarterline Road. We gave him permission to put in a culvert and get the driveway in so that they could get the the timber off of the property. And we gave him a deadline, and that then, you know, the end of the day, when he was, actually, it was a week before, he had to have the culvert and everything returned back to normal. It was all cleaned up and taken care of. So this isn't unheard of since I've been here, anyway. And and really was just, I can tell you that the amount of reaction we would have gotten from the residents in that neighborhood from large trucks coming and going. They want to deliver the house into that driveway. So there's going to be truck traffic, and to put all that truck traffic through that neighborhood was just going to be burdensome to everybody, really, including the contractors.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Dave. Barbara?
So Dave, so it is going to be a residence afterwards, it sounds like.
That, that is my understanding, yes.
Yeah. And and have you had any discussions with the the landowner of going back to Georgiana with with the drive from from the house?
His driveway will go back to Georgiana. Once he gets the house up and they, you know, they get all their building materials in, their, their foundation poured and all of the big truck stuff they have to get done. He, because he didn't want to have to, he, he originally was going to go back and try to appeal to Act two fifty and see if he could get that changed. And then he talked to his lawyer, who has experience with Act two fifty, and he summarily talked him out of that. So he's just, he just asked for the driveway, just to get his building materials and his construction in there, and then the actual driveway will come out on the Georgiana when he's done.
Okay, yeah. And in that original Act two fifty ruling, they just made four exemptions for, you know, there's, there's ninety-five houses back there, and only four were exempted to go on to East Pittsburgh Road. And and, you know, from the Planning Commission's perspective, that is a perfect example. Colonial Estates is a perfect example of good development, orderly development. And we just didn't want to see anything chipping away at that, any precedent set or anything like that. So so that's why we're asking to maybe take a look at the ordinance and at the permit and invite you to any meeting, Dave, where these sorts of things come up, and you think we might be interested in. And we're interested in a lot of things.
Okay, sure.
Well, I I think Matt stated it correctly, that the Planning Commission is free to take a look at ordinances that they are involved with and to make recommendations. So have had it.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
With me on that? Yeah, okay, okay.
We just went through some of these.
Yes. Yeah.
Made some changes.
Anything else, Barbara?
Not unless you have anything.
So, so, something that came up, Barb, in one of our discussions at a highway committee meeting was we have a few roads, private dwellings in town that are long ways from the public highway, long driveways. And there's one I know in particular that has a stream or ravine to cross, and they have bridges. And I was wondering that when you guys look at subdivisions or people looking to do some of this stuff, if you if there's something in your discussions about the weight-bearing capacity of these structures that are being built, these people are, should they have a fire? We're talking single-axle pumper trucks that weigh in excess of fifty thousand pounds. And I wonder if some of these bridges, I know, I know where there was one. And I don't know, there might be more by now, that I'm wondering if there's something in there that specifies the owner has to make sure that this is designed to carry the weight, and we get some kind of write-off that that'll carry the weight of the fire department's apparatus. They're going to be, other than fuel trucks or or somebody delivering firewood with a log trucker, materials on a ten-wheeler, which actually have more tires and carry the load differently. I I just wonder if you guys have anything to look into that and and make sure that that's addressed, because I've been concerned that people are building further and further from the public highways, and we might end up in a situation where three-quarter million-dollar piece of apparatus is laid over in a ditch because somebody's bridge wasn't rugged enough.
Yeah, we we do. We do consider that. And and we have invited fire chiefs of the, of the, I'm thinking, like, the former one has come in and with concerns like that. So we we address them. I think we, we've got a subdivision ordinance with Kevin Brown that he's had for some time, and like, he's had it so long, I've forgotten all of the new things in it.
But it's on my list, too.
Okay, thank you. Bill, I I think, I, I, I think I'm correct in saying we have some teeth in there to to look at the width of roads, and, you know, if it's going to narrow for a bridge, or those sorts of things. Is that correct?
It references our street sidewalk ordinance. So, yeah.
Yeah, all right. So the street sidewalk ordinance will cover.
There's a whole, there's a whole section on driveways. So that would, that would be where it would fall under, would be in that driveway section.
I just want to make sure that, because, you know, people seem to want to live farther and farther out in the woods, and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Barb.
Yeah, well, even more reason to look at that ordinance. I guess.
Anything else for Barbara Noyes pulling? If not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening.
Evening, all. How are you?
Good.
Uh, so yesterday evening, I put up the sign for townwide celebration. I wanted to wait till kind of things cleared, so people don't get confused. If it's there a long time, they're not going to remember.
Right.
Kind of thing. So we're all set with that. Our senior lunch is next Tuesday at eleven. We have our chef, we have our food ordered. We're going to try to serve around eleven thirty-ish. So I'd like to kind of, hopefully, we can get that word out. I I don't have a list to who to mail to. I mean, I emailed you and Sharon and I, Marty, so I, somebody could spread the word.
Okay.
Because then I want to try to start to gather a list, because I think eventually it will come under my umbrella.
Yeah. We should have a little signup table, perhaps, at not only this event, but townwide celebration. See if we can get some people, too.
We could do that.
Yeah. Okay.
Does that mean you're volunteering to sit at the booth?
When I'm not cooking.
That's right, you're cooking. Sounds like, oh, Matt's cooking, too. So that will take place. The guards are ready to bring their yummies and serve everybody. And the menu is burgers and dogs.
Nice.
And then special treats. So that will be rain or shine next Tuesday, starting at eleven, and then we'll be around eleven thirty. We'll start to feed you. Then we'll go from there, right at the pool. Sorry, right at the pool. Um, so JP, I hope you can make that.
Thank you.
He's singling out people?
Nope, nope. I just like it when JP shows up. He brings a crowd with him. That would be good. The next thing, soccer signups are ongoing.
To show up at five after twelve, because there'll be nothing left.
Yeah.
Well, that's the highway department's problem. You can show up there and get your food, and all departments heads and staff are welcome as well, as they traditionally are. But if you come late, I can't guarantee people like to eat. So hopefully, I factor enough food in, and we should be good to go. Soccer signups are underway for the fall. Yes, the fall is vastly approaching, and we're an online forum, so I'm just reminding residents when they're signing up, there's essentially two parts to the online. There's the registration, and then there's the payment part. So to help myself and Carrie Clark out, please fill out both parts on the form. Otherwise, we're chasing you around for either payment or registration. So if you would please do that. It is pretty crystal clear on the online form. Just please look at that. And then the only other thing I have is that, yes, the last day is the twenty-fourth, which means that's like less than, it's almost a month away. It's coming quickly. It seems like it. So that's all I really have. Otherwise, everything is going smoothly, and we're running well. Unless you guys have questions for me.
Questions for Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director?
Yeah, I have just a statement. I, I have been up to the pool several, several times just because that's part of my committee. And I would recommend to anybody that hasn't seen it, since they painted things, it looks wonderful. It, the kids did a great job. And I, I visited with the lifeguards, and I have to say, we have a pretty fine group there. So kudos to that group and and to the work that's been done up there, to Mike and and all of the kids that work with him. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Mike.
Fireworks are that night, correct?
On townwide celebration evening, yes.
Okay.
That night.
All right.
Yeah. My, I had family visiting from out of town. They took advantage of the pickleball court early one morning. They were very pleased. And saw this guy walking by with a big dog. Do you have a big dog?
I have a black lab.
Yeah, that's the one. Anyway, they, they.
I don't walk my, my wife walks my dog at the park, but I don't usually do that.
Well, anyway, I'm to pass along that they were very pleased with the facility. So thank you.
Oh, I, as as funny as it is, I was up there doing work around it, and Andy McMillan, who is a town resident, has helped us greatly. His father-in-law is huge into the pickleball world, like, has a company and sells all the product, and we got the talking, and we're going to create a better experience for pickleball, and he's going to cut us some deals with some equipment and stuff. So it's all about who you run into when they're playing pickleball. And the scheduling part has worked really well. Nobody's called, nobody's complained. And they're up there faithfully, and so is tennis, to be honest. Tennis is kind of making a comeback, at least up there. So, but the park's being used all the time. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Larry on? He is not. Okay. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Hello again, everybody. Not a lot going on, but oh, pretty busy. So we got the the roadside mower fixed. I'm not sure if that was fixed from our last meeting, but I know a couple of people on the board were not at the last meeting. So we.
But I got a report. I've got to tell you, Dave, when I got an email when I was in Ireland, that the town road, road crew had been by, and they were mowing the poison parsnip on Creek Road. So thank you very much.
That was, uh, not our, our first shot out of the gate, but it was pretty damn close.
Yeah.
Because we seem to know somebody that lives there and might want to have that taken care of. Not that we play favorites or anything, I'm just saying. So we did, because we lost, basically, lost six weeks waiting for the part for that thing. I actually did some shopping around, and I found another vendor that I'm probably going to turn to for parts for this thing in the future. It didn't really help us with losing six weeks, but that is what it is. So we went out and pretty much covered the entire town. six weeks, but that is what it is. So we went out and pretty much covered the entire town in a little over a week. Uh, well, about a week and a half. And uh, just did like a single pass, a couple of places. We did, you know, a couple of passes just to get stuff kind of pushed back. Mendon actually has the mower right now, our partners in crime on the thing. So uh, when they get done with it, uh, last year it took about a little over two weeks for them to finish up. Um, but they have a brand new green crew up there. So I'm not sure how long it's going to take, but as soon as we get that machine back, it goes back out for the big mall. Then we'll, you know, places where we can get back, like, you know, uh, Grove Street by McKinley where we can get out there, maybe four passes on the west side of the road. Uh, we'll go back and push everything back as far as we can and get it ready for the end of the season. And then uh, Mendon will take it the last part of the season. They like to blow the leaves off out of the ditches on a lot of their dirt roads and stuff. So I'm expecting by second week of August, maybe we'll be back out doing it again. We, I don't know if you remember back several months ago, I put a bid out for culvert cleaning. Uh, we had A1 scheduled for last week to come out and do, uh, clean culverts for us. So we got, in a week's time, we got seventy one culverts, excuse me, seventy one culverts done, which is just about ten percent of what's out there. So we didn't, we made a, a scratch, but we didn't really make a dent. I'm going to see if uh, maybe either later this year, maybe early next spring, I can get out there and, and do another week. So that's a work in progress. Um, I managed to, after our last highway committee meeting and several phone calls, I actually managed to get ahold of Philip, Philip Gawett over at Gawett Marble and spoke to him about changing uh, Simon's Road. Uh, changing that intersection so that it doesn't, it's not an off ramp from Route four. I believe Joe mentioned this at the last meeting of, or reporting with committee meeting, but I spoke to Philip anyway and he is very enthusiastic about it. He said he actually brought it up to uh, Joe's and Gally several, several years ago. And um, nothing really came of it, but his idea and our idea is exactly the same. So we get zero pushback from Gawett. I know Bill's trying to set up a meeting with Chris from V Trans. Uh, he kind of gave us an initial blessing to take on this project. As soon as we got some buy-in from the neighbors and we've got that. So uh, we're trying to set up a committee meeting with Chris and V Trans and see what our next step is, which is probably a site visit and I don't know, probably be an engineer involved or something trying to get.
So I did reach out to him and uh, he said he's got to talk to, he had talked to a couple of people. He got back to me this morning. Uh, he has, for a nine o'clock meeting, he has uh, July nineteenth, July twenty sixth or July twenty ninth. Any of those dates are available to us. So that's this Friday, a week from this Friday or the following Monday after that.
Well, I, I don't work Fridays, but I, I will come in for that. So I don't really, whatever, whatever.
Nineteenth, twenty-sixth or twenty-ninth.
Let's do it to twenty-ninth, Dave.
That's fine. I, I'll come in on a Friday. I don't really care. I think this.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, but, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Saturday, a pretty large oak tree came down on Grove Street. Uh, that's the second to come down of five. And they all came out of one little group grouping. So it's just a matter of time before the other three come down. So we spent most of the morning yesterday cleaning that thing up. And then our chipper started to overheat and we need a thermostat. So we still have some brush. We got to trim up there, but or, or a chip up there once we get the chipper back up and running, but that kept us entertained for a little while. We are currently working on beaver remediation on Post Road and Route seven by Morzato. And we started uh, this phase two of the sidewalk on Post Road. We started that today. And we made pretty good progress. So we oh, and uh, Post Road, if you hadn't noticed, is all torn up. Uh, it's got shim on it now. It should be, if the weather holds by the end of tomorrow, that should be topped according to our contractor. So got a lot of stuff going on, on Post Road. Not least the witch and beaver.
Questions for our road commissioner?
In your packet.
I have number three on our pack.
Yep.
It's the um, Hampel residence and I if you drive around anywhere, there's a lot of burn spots on people's lawn. A lot of it is the extreme heat we had. If we decided to replant that again, my suggestion, and I'm, you know, I might be off track, would be, would have to wait till fall. Cause if you're going to seed something and this heat continues, um, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to take. I mean, anywhere you drive around, you see that there are lawns with burn marks. Mine, miners have got some, so that's my input into it. I don't know what you decide you want to do.
So thank you, Sharon. This is the letter from um, property owner Brian Hempel, who is on seventy Farnham Lane, who sent a letter and a bunch of photos in showing um, the, the repair that had occurred by the highway department. But he still feels it is unsatisfactory and I don't know if the highway committee wants to take a look, but your point is well taken about if anything further happens, it should wait until possibly the fall.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what's your pleasure with this one?
Is Dave, have you looked at this again since we got this second letter?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can go up and take a look at it. I mean, we, so the, the neighbor across the cul-de-sac from him, the, the damage was mostly on her side of the cul-de-sac, which we own, by the way. And she, she was very happy with what we did there. Um, I mean, we, we topsoiled it. We uh, put straw matting over it, you know, and tried to get the grass seed going and everything. Um, I mean, we can go up and, and re-landscape, I guess.
So I just walked by there. Um, because I, I looked at this and I looked at the pictures. I couldn't make heads or tails of the pictures. So, um, so I walked by and for the most part, it looked good to me. It looked better than the pictures, I thought. I mean, the, the screening's still down. There's grass growing. Um, there was one part, which I think is this picture here, which is over on his side of things. And I don't know where the property line is. If it's on, it's kind of next to his driveway. So it may be on his property.
About the middle of his lawn.
Pretty large right of way for a cul-de-sac there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't. The damage is on the town right away.
So, so it may be in our right of way, but I think.
I know it's part of, it looks like.
That was the one part where there was still kind of some, like a lump that you know, I think was still just bare dirt, but for the most part, it looked good to me. So I'm not sure if maybe if, since he sent this, maybe it's improved. I'm not sure, but.
Sounds like Dave's going to go up and.
It looks, it looks a lot more green.
I'll go take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for, oh, I've got one quick thing. A thank you from a town resident. What? Who uh, made use of the um, sand to fill up some sandbags to prevent water from getting into a basement. So thank you for having that available for folks.
I, I wished when she, I got off the phone with her, I wished that she didn't have to use the sandbags. And as it turned out, I don't think she had to. So that's a good thing all the way around.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Okay, Matt?
Uh, Dave, I can't remember if this came up at a previous meeting or if I just heard about it elsewhere. But have you heard from residents about a, a brush situation on West Ridge?
Yes.
Yes.
That's been going, that's. That's been going on for a couple of years. Uh, well, not a couple of years. It started, it started last summer. Uh, the, the resident there, for whatever reason, if I remember right, last year they had a contractor in there that was cutting down like a hedge row or something.
Yeah.
And it was kind of flopped over. It was on their property, but kind of laying out into the, there isn't really a ditch there, but um, close to the road edge and it, it looks like hell. I'm not going to say it doesn't. But it's not really us. I don't, I don't really know what to do about it. I mean.
I mean, it's in our right of way, right?
Uh, part of it is, yeah. Part of it is. The butts of the trees, like they tipped the trees over from inside their property line toward the road. It's not, it doesn't obstruct traffic. It's, it's unsightly and that's why I know that's what the name, you know, it's, it's uh, I believe it was cedars or pine or something. So you know, when it fell over, all of the leaves or the needles and everything turned orange and it, it, it looks like hell. I, it does.
So I mean, given where this stuff lies now, is there any influence that we can uh, exert on that situation and getting it cleaned up?
Um, I don't know that I can make them clean it up. I can, we could send them a letter and say, you need to get the, the tops out of the right of way or something. And then mark out the right of way and then they could just cut them off.
That would be a good, seems like that'd be a good start. Or if you guys get bored and the chipper is nice and cool, you could run it by there and throw the stuff through. It'd be done probably.
We could do that. And then everybody would say, oh, you just come by and chip everybody's brush.
I know, I know. It's uh, doesn't seem like he's making progress.
Okay.
So a couple of things that I've, one day, Val Caya tomorrow, um, regarding a water issue on Post Road and Post Road Extension, the road out to the reservoir. Um, the fellow that lives in the house down over, right off the road there in a corner. I'll, I can, he called about water concerns. The other thing is on the East Pittsford Road on the sharp corner by the polo field. I don't know if you've noticed that about four feet of the vegetation along the East Pittsford Road in the town right of way is all dead.
I saw that. I actually, I went to my mom's today after work.
So it is my guess that the landowner has gone out there and sprayed some roundup and so I don't know if anything we have for him is the use of herbicides in the town right of way by a property owner.
He does have an herbicide truck or two.
That's what they do for a living. Um, and so it's very unusual and anything that goes on in the right of way, I think we're supposed to know about. So I don't know how, it's the first time I've ever noticed this.
So I know in my other life, um, I tried to do something like that at River Street Bridge because there was a lot of nefarious activity going on beside and under the bridge and the vegetation was three, three and a half feet tall in the middle of summer. And I tried to actually get that company to go out there and spray that. And they went through the roof and said, well, you can't actually spray unless, as a municipality, you can't spray anything like that unless you have a plan and it has to be approved by the state and it has to be, it, it was like, this list was like six pages long. And then they did it anyway. I don't know if we have any recourse on that. I, I don't know how that works.
I, I, I think that uh, some, we, we need to address it in some manner.
So a letter from our administrator to the landowner saying we have noticed that you have spray, apparently sprayed.
Someone has.
Herbicide.
Well, it's funny because it's like this, this dead patch and then like six feet away is this lovely green lawn that they mow.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and so if, if we allowed this to go on everywhere in town, it would not be very good. So I think that's something that um, does need to be addressed. Some, some communities, they actually, that's how they do around bridges is guardrails. They do spray them, but you have to get permitted to do it. It's a whole.
I, I can work with Bill on that. We can draft the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
No problem. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Marcia Chaffey, um, our listers office and Marie Fagan, please come up then. So this is, so you've got a couple of things for us and I know Colin Fingen is also on the line, should there be any. And, and I think we're going to have a report from Matt as well. So, so what have we got?
Well, just to bring you up to date, grand list has been lodged. Um, it's been certified by the town clerk. It is, now resides in the vault for any of the general public or any of you to take a look at. Grievance hearings are set for the twenty-third. So there goes my senior lunch. But anyway, and I mean, basically that's it. We're now, you know, cleaning things up, filing things away, getting ready for another round of visits for um, you know, properties. We've got little sticky notes all over the place, letting us know what to go out and inspect before the end of the year. So we're not, we're not rushing around in April trying to get everything done.
Good. Well, thank you for that. I know that was a huge amount of work. So we're good to go. Marie included a memo about a change in the law that proved a little sticky, but it sounds like you folks resolved it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we took care of it.
Okay, very good.
We work like demons, but we got it done.
Thank you. I mean, it's, um, it catches us all occasionally. So I appreciate the effort you folks put into resending the notices and all of that. So thank you.
Which, it's a great opportunity to ask Bill. Are you all up to speed on the new meeting law stuff and?
Everything was posted where it was supposed to be.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good.
It seemed like for the most part of what we're already doing works, but.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, I think we still have, have a lot of questions. There's a lot of ambiguity in.
It's a weird situation.
Uh, yeah. Seems like every time we meet, we may have to host it as an open meeting. It's ridiculous.
Have a permanent, just post your office hours.
So there was a meeting concerning, uh, we have on the agenda, let's see. Item A, board to discuss school board reappraisal comments. And I understand there was a meeting that Matt participated in. Could you give us a summary of what occurred?
So sure, uh, listeners hosted, uh, well, virtually a Q and A session with uh, school board chair, Tina Kishba and Colin Fingen and myself just following along and you know, talked about the reappraisal process, what the, you know, regulations are on that, kind of where things stand, what has to be gone through um, with property valuation review and finding vendors and all that. I guess the takeaways are we need, uh, we think pre-approval from PVR to move forward, um, when, when we want to do a reappraisal. Um, I should point it out that they are conscious of the new, every six year rule that's coming into effect next year. And we want to make sure that any reappraisal that we do, whenever that happens is um, qualified as the baseline for that six-year measurement. And also that anytime we do, we go forward with, with a reappraisal, that we have sufficient funds saved up to cover it. And that if we spend those funds, that again, it will, you know, before reappraisal, that property valuation review is going to respect going forward. So I think um, what I'm hearing is from the school board that they believe, um, you know, doing a reappraisal would be beneficial for those taxes because of the effect that the CLA has on. For those taxes because of the effect that the CLA has on, um, the school board. Budget, the way the formula is calculated now. Uh, and that. Listers agree, um, that. The appraisal is necessary. The state, of course, is backed up as we've talked about before, so. Uh, we don't know when it might happen, but the next step as far as what the town does or what the listeners do would be. Uh, preparing paperwork on a request for proposal that then goes to PVR to. Review and then we can go out to vendors to. Work on getting in line with somebody. Or however long it takes.
What we've heard before, we're not driving this bus anymore. The state is, right, Marsha? Aren't they kind of regulating when or how this reappraisal?
Yeah, we're, we're governed by the COD. The, the school. Portion is governed by the CLA, but the CLA has no effect. On when we get an order to reappraise.
Right.
So, yes, but we're being proactive. We're getting out there and we realize, I mean, two thousand thirteen. The actual reappraisal was done in two thousand nine, but two thousand thirteen was a statistical. And we're still, we're still working with, you know, with the Marshall and Swift cap cables. From that last, uh, statistical reappraisal.
So the, the COD governs when the state issues an order.
Right.
But they don't say necessarily that you can't do it.
Oh, no.
Just as a practical matter. Finding a vendor that can do it. So, you know, it was in the paper today that Castleton. Did get on. With Tyler Technologies, who I understand is new to the list of the company that. Administers the court filing system to. Mixed reviews.
Yeah.
But, but so in theory, a town could decide to do it. Uh, at any time, but it's just that when the COD. Uh, dictates, then the state will. Issue an order.
Yeah, see, I thought they were going to try to do, the state was going to take over reappraisals and do them. And we would just find, you know, get.
Well, they've got a, they've got a, a year of twenty twenty seven before all of this even takes. Effect based on Act sixty eight. So there is time.
If I can add, so during our meeting with the school board, one of the conversations I had with you and what we've had with the board before. Is the fear of expending down the budget item for the appraisal. And then the state coming in on its schedule of every six years saying, two years after we're done or a year after we're done. Saying, okay, no, that's not acceptable. We don't accept it. And you have to do it again and we have no money in the coffers to do it. So. I had shared with Matt that we had gotten a verbal opinion from our district advisor as to what property valuation was doing. Today I asked for the written, she did share, her and the director of property valuation did share an email. With me a copy of which I have for Bill to put in with a record for you guys. But so basically they've agreed to implement a policy that if the town had completely. Recently completed a reappraisal when the order came due based on this new legislation. Uh, and assuming their numbers were still good, okay, meaning that we're not out of whack again. Um, they would get a pass until the next cycle. So if you complete a reappraisal in two thousand twenty nine and your required cycle is two thousand thirty one. Assuming your numbers are still good, you would get a pass until two thirty, two thousand thirty seven, which is the next six year cycle. So they are going to do that. The statute is actually going to take effect in two thousand twenty seven. So, uh, there's going to be a several year transition. They want reappraisals to continue to happen in earnest. And when they're completed. As long as the numbers stay good and we are not in this top heavy or, uh, unfair distribution. Of who's paying what, you know, which is what those numbers reflect. Will go back to the end of the line for the six year. So it could be another many years. So that has been confirmed.
The twenty twenty seven, I thought I had read that, uh, the six year rule was going into effect next year. Is that not till twenty?
This is PBR now saying two thousand twenty seven. So, um, but Castleton's under an order for reappraisal. So that was one of the reasons they did what they've done.
PVR might have to go back and change the statute again because.
I know.
Six year rule is in the statute that goes into effect.
Into twenty five.
So.
Well, there's another report that, um, was mandated in this, um, H four seventy eight, which became Act sixty eight. Uh, another report that has to be issued, um, by December thirty first of this year. So there may be more things in that that, uh.
Who, who has to issue that report?
The report is being issued by, oh gosh. Where did I?
It's not anything we have to.
No, 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 no. This is an independent firm that they've, they've hired. And it escapes me right now who it was, but they were taxed with the. You know, with putting together a report that has to be submitted to PB and R and the Vermont Tax Department. By the end of this year. It was part of the.
I kind of remember you mentioning that a while ago. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Well, if we, so can we go out and start? Searching for reappraisal firm to do us?
We can, but we've been informed by. Christie right now that, um.
We're still.
Nobody's, nobody will even bid.
Yeah.
Because we're so far out, they said they will not hold pricing. Castleton only got two bids. One of them was Tyler. And the other one just flatly said. Nope, we're not going to do it.
Possible that Tyler being new to the market is still. Thinking work?
Well, we actually went online today to look.
Yeah, we did.
Too. And, and I do think that there's differences between the types of appraisals that are being done. So there's consideration for that as well. One of the things our town does is a full wide reappraisal with, with people. Getting, you know, exterior and interior inspections. Um, one of the things that Castleton doing is allowing the taxpayers to fill out information as to what their changes are made. And that's not the reappraisals we have done. So there's differences, but to answer your question. Once we have the, which we are working on the.
Yeah.
Request for, uh, proposal, which is a draft, which includes all kinds of information in order for. The appraisal company to give us the information because not only is it the reappraisal, but you know, as listeners. Whoever's sitting in these chairs has to be able to take that information for however many years and apply. Every one of their assumptions to new builds, new deck changes, you know, things like that. So you have to know. Exactly what it is their basis for doing the reappraisal. So once we get that request for proposal put together, then we have to go to PVR. For permission. To appraise. And right now we're not under an order, so whether or not they're gonna. Allow us.
We're a couple of years out, no matter what you do.
You are, we are a couple of years out.
So.
Well, they have to look at your request for proposals, P, uh, property evaluation.
You do have to attach them.
Okay, and, and they have to approve what the. The, uh, the appraisal will consist of.
Not so much that is the, uh, is the purpose and made and the extent and why, but one of the things that they're looking at. Is that they do a sales evaluation study of every property that sold. In the state and all the land and they're, they're doing all of the changes. It's what drives the numbers for reappraisal order. So they're looking at our numbers versus other towns who might be in worse position. Taking resources away. This is, you know, stuff that's not said. Out loud, taking resources away from other towns that might be in a harbor in a different, even a worse position. There are people with CLAs at sixty five.
Yeah.
Right now and CODs of over.
Twenty five.
Yeah, so. I think that's where their, their thought processes.
The company, the company that we had do it the last time, they're not in business anymore.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that was Rich Lewis for the statistical and basically it was Rich and Howard. And all they did was drive around so that they would identify neighborhoods. There was no interior.
The last time that somebody actually did it was on.
Right appraisal.
Right. And, and then their values come in like a hundred and twenty percent of fair market.
I believe so, yeah.
It was, it messed everything up if I remembered. So that one went the other way too much. We.
Right.
You know, properties were overpriced. So now they're trying to get it so that we're not in that boat again.
Yes, there's a line I know is going in the request for proposal that is supposed to be at a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, not like a hundred and, because I think they figured it was like a twenty percent over what it should have been.
That was Lisa Wright and Lisa, of course, is. The assessor for, I think, five or six towns, plus she's on the board in, um, you know, in, uh, West Stroudland, so. They're no longer. In that business.
So, so even if we put out a request for proposal and you get all of the stuff. If some other town needs the services of one of these firms, they may get it before us.
They could get it before us.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could.
So there's, there's some things that we just have no control over.
No, and we don't know, you know, you're, we're limited to certified licensed appraisal firms.
Right.
We're limited to employees that have the training. That are, is required of their appraisal firms. The town would have approval as to any employee they would have to identify. Whether to bring it on board and the town would have approval if that person doesn't. Meet the, the requirements for. Do an affair and impartial and, uh. Assessment that every taxpayer one's done can have faith in that is done properly. Whether they like the numbers or not, the methodology has to be done right.
So. So Dave had sent me a text and he said that Orwell just did theirs last year. And he said his appraisal went up a hundred percent. So that's significant. But I don't know who did it or where.
Didn't he also build the house?
Well, yeah, but I mean, the, the value of the property. The house didn't get built until, I don't know, this year or so, but I'm just saying, obviously some of these are getting done.
Nimric has been doing the bulk of. The, um, assessments. Marie and I attended data collection classes. And there were many, many newbies. That Nimric has hired. And they were taking these data collection and that's all they do. They go out and gather the data, bring it back and. The Nimric people. Plug it in. And we have an advantage there too, because not only do we have the Nimric system, but we're tied into Kama, which now. Belongs to Nimric. Nimric owns the Microsoft Kama system. Which carries over into V T Pi. So we're working with three, three separate systems here.
So I think Marie might have been conservative when she said some CLAs are sixty five. I think some might be down at like fifty or fifty bucks. So you're.
Yeah.
You would expect the doubling, but people, it's, it's going to be important for people to understand that just because your value goes up, doesn't necessarily mean your tax.
Absolutely.
Because it could go down or.
They could actually go down because the town needs X number of dollars to run. If the value of the town goes up.
Yep.
Then the portion you pay could go down, even though your assessment goes up. It's the amount, yeah, that's, that's always, people have to understand that some of this. Hate to say it, could be beneficial, but it, it, for certain people, it could be.
But from this, you know, the school board's concern is that the CLA is an even bigger impact now under the current formula than it even used to be. So.
Right.
Now, what you just said used to be true, it may be even more true now just because of how. Her education side is impacted.
Yeah.
Anything further from anyone? Colin, do you have any comments or insights you would like to share?
Uh, no, I just, I appreciated the meeting we have with the listeners and Matt being there and, um. Just hearing our concern and, and learning more about the process. Um, it'll allow us to share with, with all of our fellow townspeople, the, the process we have to go through and the, um, expected timelines. Cause I think everyone's very highly focused on their property tax bill this year, as they should be. Um. And, you know, that, that CLA portion, when we take our equalized tax rate and we have to divide it by. Being at seventy five percent CLA. Basically jacks our educational tax portion up thirty two percent. So any, any word we can help people understand. The appraisal process, how long it's going to take, but ultimately, you know, most people, I think historically. Fight reappraisals because they feel like their assessment's going up, but to Matt's point and what we were trying to share is that it could potentially help. Um, taxpayers because we'll, if we can get ourselves to a hundred, um, then we're looking at just the equalized tax rate. We don't have to get. Whacked with, um. The CLA conversion, which essentially is just. Creating us to be a gold town and sending more money in my pillar than we're getting back. So that was kind of, that was inform, very informative for me to be at that meeting to understand the process from the listeners and. Um, and how little vendors are in Vermont. Um, so hopefully the state of Vermont can go out and help. I think every town or a lot, a majority of the towns are in this situation that potentially hopefully Vermont can go out and find more vendors we can use that are trusted. That can do good work because a lot of towns are in the backlog like us.
Okay.
So true.
Thank you. So if there are no further questions or comments, thank you folks very much.
Thank you.
All right, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Uh, just one thing tonight, the, uh, there should be an application in front of you. For a. For Calista. Um, if you could approve that, we'll get her signed up and started tomorrow night.
All right, uh, Calista Fox, um, who lives in. Ninety one First Street, Rutland. I'm assuming that's the city. Are we okay with our. Uh, ratios, um. Town versus people outside of town?
We are, yep.
Okay. Um, so is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Calista as a. Uh, fire department member. Any discussion?
Senior member or junior member, Chris?
Senior.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Senior member.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded. If there's no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
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 And Sharon's an aye, so I think we can all sign here.
We. This has always amazed me for the. Some in number of years where I was chief and board member that this is the only department. That the. Department head doesn't do the hiring.
Okay.
It's just, just a thought. I'm, I'm not sure how we got here.
Okay, stick this in the folder. So we're all set. Everybody's signed. Uh, and Sharon, if you should come over tomorrow, there'll be a few things for you to sign in the folder.
Yep, no problem.
Questions? Thank you. Any questions or comments for our town fire chief? No, okay. Thank you, chief. Have a good evening.
You too.
Hey, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Uh. Good evening. I have a couple of things.
Yes, please.
Um, so let's see. Um, quickly, uh, the primary election will be. About a month from now in August on the thirteenth. Um, the. Uh, ballots are not being sent out by the state. Um, only absentee ballots that people have requested are going to homes. Um, polling places will be open as usual. Just a quick reminder on that if anyone was wondering. Um. I believe November will be, uh, mail in is what I was told. For the general election, general presidential. But I can get back to you on that. Um, let's see, two important things. I have been playing around with the tax rate. So we do need to set a date on setting the tax rate. Um, before I finalize anything that comes out of my office, I do have a question. Um, on the budget that was approved by the voters, there's a line. In the general revenue. Um, section at the bottom that says grant income. Eighty five thousand dollars. I could not find any backup, nor could Bill find any backup of what that was for. And I need to know if anyone remembers what that's for before we do the tax rate.
That was a highway thing.
It's under, did you say it was under general?
In general.
Okay.
Is that anything to do with the, um. Monies for, uh, stormwater?
Oh.
Did we have?
Well, but that's a grant, but that's always reimbursement. It's not income.
Right.
That's why we, it didn't make sense. Like, I, I couldn't find any record of it. I obviously added it, but. That's reimbursement. It's not just.
that's reimbursement. It's not just.
Yeah, so.
Um, I, let me, I've got some budget notes at home, so let me go through and see if I can figure out what it might have been.
Maybe that even though it was reimbursement, that we included the anticipated expense, the expense side. And so we wanted to include the outstanding reimbursement.
Right.
I, I think we, I remember seeing that when we did the budget and I think there was discussion then as to what it was, but it was.
Okay.
Good lord, we do those budgets in November, December. And we're.
Then we explained them once in January and once in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll take a look.
So would we be able to set the tax rate the next board meeting? Two weeks?
Did you hear Joe's question?
Two weeks, Carrie, could we do that in two weeks? Would that be sufficient for you?
As long as, um, a tax rate is set before August, um, I just have to, as always, get the tax bills out in the mail and in people's homes by the tenth of, uh, it has to be by the tenth of August. They have to have it.
Okay, so our next meeting is July thirtieth. And in the past, we've done it both ways. I think we've done sometimes as a, a little pre-meeting. Um, sometimes we've done a separate day. Would you have the information and the little worksheets available for, uh, say a five o'clock meeting on July thirtieth?
They're already done. I'm just waiting on the eighty-five grand.
Okay.
That'll give you sufficient time if we approve it that night to get everything out in the mail. Should.
What's the date that you're saying?
The thirtieth. That's our next regular meeting. Or should we do it sooner?
I think you should do it sooner.
Okay. So other suggestions, um, we could do it the off.
Well, if we did it, if we were ready next Tuesday. Be a quick meeting. That's it. We've done it before in a special meeting.
We have Tuesday.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third. At oh, five-thirty, a little better for you, Matt?
Five-thirty, six.
My calendar.
My best calendar.
Yeah.
See if you have three other commitments already.
Um, Sharon, are you available next Tuesday, July twenty-third at five-thirty?
Let me look, hang on.
Looks good for me.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, Mary.
Is that okay? Sorry.
Yep.
Um, it's okay. Five-thirty?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, your, your box lit up, but I can't hear if you said anything.
Oh, I said, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, um, that's okay for the rest of us. So why don't we set the tax rate? And ask Bill to warn it for next week, Tuesday, July twenty-third at five-thirty here at the town hall. So that takes care of item D.
So a question on that, cause having only been through that rodeo once, if we were deciding as to whether we could or should apply some capital improvement fund money towards our bond, is that something that we would be taking up in that meeting and figuring out that night? Or how does that work?
I think we would have to get the voters' permission in March or
Capital, to use the money for what, Matt?
To pay down the bond. Or to make payments on the bond.
Yeah, I, I mean, I didn't, I, I guess I haven't heard that discussion yet.
There hasn't been one. That's why I'm raising the question.
Normally.
I mean, Carrie's brought up the question of, you know, we've got a surplus, um, carrying over. Can we return some of that money to the taxpayer? Taxpayers have voted in the past that the surplus is, you know, carries, goes into the capital improvement fund. We don't know what the balance of that fund is right now, but it seems like if we were going to try to impact the tax rate, that would, that might be the way we could and should do it.
It's, except we can't without the voters' approval.
Well, I don't know. That's capital expenditure.
No, the capital improvement money we, we have spent without voter approval. They gave us permission to spend that. So, so we put the capital improvement money into the, you know, when we, we voted as a board to use seven-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, I believe of that toward the new building. And we included that in there, but we have spent like monies to pay for a highway truck or we paid, we spent money to do the, um, grant at, or do the trail work at Northwood. So we could say we, we were gonna do that, but I'm awful leery about using that money. It's, it's a short-lived reprieve, you know, and it doesn't amount to that much where we spend that and then we have to go borrow money to do something because we, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think, I think we're gonna.
Know how, we need to know what our balance is first and then we have to decide how much.
Struggling with trying to find the expenditures that we've approved over the past several years, which we didn't, we didn't put the sticky notes on the door like.
Reality is, you know, of course, people, you know, have concerns about what's gonna happen with taxes and when these bond payments start hitting the tax rate, that's also gonna.
You know, and unfortunately that we're gonna, you know, we have spent certain amount of money out of the cash to open, we approved, the voters approved us to use that additional money toward the bond for Center Station. And I don't know how many, if this is the last year that we have payments coming out of that. I, I think we're getting closer. We're, we're gonna kind of get whacked for two because I think there's gonna be like the new building and then the old building and they're gonna be kind, but the old building will be a very short-lived bond. It's only gonna be like seven or eight years in this time. Because we've paid the majority of the twenty years. So I, I think some of this stuff.
Just added it to my list about whether we, we can, um, my list to talk with Kevin about. So I'll have an answer when we're here. I mean, yeah, yeah. It makes sense.
I mean, we have approved, um, capital improvement expenditures as a group. I think tonight, without taking a vote, we've kind of authorized the expenditure of the monies to pay for the security system.
We did vote.
We did vote.
We won't vote it. So, I mean.
Again, that's gonna have an impact on how much we actually have available.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, the, so, cause one of the things we do know is there was three-hundred-and-forty-five or fifty thousand over on the one percent money and that's kind of there. Um, that's, that hasn't been earmarked for anything. The, um, actual amounts that come out of the other budgets that are going in and some of the overages, like the delinquent tax amounts that were collected are higher. Um, so some of that stuff went to weigh that out. Carrie came up with a, you know, a figure of right around seven-fifty-one for everything totaled and then, um, but whether or not, you know, doesn't some of this pertain, the audit has to kind of be done before you actually come up with a finalized number. So.
Yeah.
We're, we're playing with raw numbers here, but I don't know. There's, there's a lot of options. I just don't know what's the best. I mean, it looks good to try to do something and if we can cover the first year's bond payments and we have this, you know, by the time they come due, I'm not, you know, that would be.
Be able to, because I think it's interest only for the first year, right?
Right.
And after that.
You know, in, in, capital improvements are things that have long duration and obviously if we're paying off the bond with some of that, that's gone to a building that's gonna be there. And so that, that would be of valid use. I just have to be careful that we don't
Spend what we don't have.
Well, yeah, well, it's just that we, we're having a hard time coming up with that actual number because we some pieces change from time to time, but I think that's a good, might be a good way to go. I wouldn't spend all of it though. I, you know, I wouldn't, I would never figure on spending the entire seven-hundred thousand. I think.
You could get another year of relief and for, that would be especially with the, during those overlap years.
Right. If we can minimize the overlap years would be great. And, and, and anything we can do, that would be really helpful.
Okay, so all for discussion and I will see what I can dig out about that eighty-five thousand dollar grant, cause I think I have pretty good notes on it. Okay, um, anything else for our town clerk and treasurer?
Well, I wasn't done yet.
I'm sorry.
We're just trying to boot you out the door early.
Um, so I've been talking with Teresa Mealy. Um, and we're trying to move forward on some of the personnel policies that affect, um, what we do for payroll. Um, and what we, we were on the phone with, uh, Nimerick for a little bit over the last week. Um, and it was suggested that, um, I bring to you for approval. Um, the, uh, fact that we have to get every single employee under the town umbrella on the same payroll cycle. There is a department that's off slightly than what we normally have for a pay um, days, where, where they start and where they end. Um, and we just need to shift them to where we are. And we need an approval from the select board to do so. And then Teresa and I will come up with um, when we are going to do that. And what that means is, um, the police department is off uh, our normal schedule by about three days. So with the suggestion of the programmer in order to shift them over so we're all on the same cycle, um, it would just be a matter of, uh, cutting them two checks. Um, so that they have three days in one check and then they're on the cycle for the next check. Um, and it won't affect much of anything. There are some stipulations that I'll talk to Ed about, but, um, there won't be anything um, drastic. We'll just make sure that they are on the same playing field as everybody else down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Carrie, do you know if, um, you're, did you or Teresa get an answer to the overtime question that I raised for that short-term period?
So, um, I didn't know that you raised it, but the, um, answer to the fact is the three-day period will not have, it's not, um, for any overtime. But if it happens, it goes into the next pay, i- into that second paycheck. Um, so it's not, they will not be losing anything. It just for, um, to follow law, you can't. They aren't subject to overtime in a three-day period. If they won't have forty hours.
Does that mean that the hours, that if they're, if they work extra hours, that it would just, those would be included in the next period?
Yes, and then in that next paycheck, cause they're gonna get two within period.
Okay.
Is that something we have to vote on?
It sounds it.
I move that we authorize Carrie to adjust, uh, PD's pay cycles to coincide with the rest of the departments. And I got a smile out of the chief.
And, and there's no opposition here among the two officers, three officers, four.
Fire clerk and treasurer who made me do that, so.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to the motion? Motion is made in the seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
And Sharon's an aye? Okay, motion carries. So thank you. Carrie, that will take care of that. And what else might you have for us?
That's it. Um, I will just wait on the eighty-five uh, grand, cause then I'll be able to, um, make everything final.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Sadly, I have another question.
Oh, Matt's got something more.
Just to fulfill Ed's expectation of how many questions I'll ask in a meeting. But this one's for him too. So, so we're gonna be discussing cooperating with some potential grants out there to, uh, um, involving police positions. And the, and, and those grant opportunities are on a reimbursement basis. So we would be paying, um, although there would ultimately be no cost to the town, we would be paying the money upfront on a quarterly basis and getting reimbursed each quarter. So question I raise was, well, does this pose a cash flow problem to us at some point if we're doing, say, two of these? Do you have any sense of that?
Are, are you asking me?
Yeah.
I guess I'm trying to fill in the middle lines here. What, what do you, so it, it, you're asking what?
We had, if we had two, if we had two employees that we have to pay, but we get reimbursed for the pay on a quarterly basis, can we make that work from a cash flow basis or is that gonna cause us some heartache?
Isn't that what, when Ed, weren't you getting CFAC money or something when you were working like that?
Was they, they paid us, uh, quarterly, fifteen thousand a quarter.
Yeah. And there was a problem with that.
So are these position, these are PD positions that we're gonna be looking for grants? So if man, I don't know if they, muck it, muddy's water, but we have monies available within the Cortina Fund that you could pay salaries and just put it back.
It's not, yeah.
But I don't know if that's gonna work, but. Or you just because of town, I, I would think that we are not so broke that if during a quarter, we paid two officers and that money showed a deficit in the line for salaries within the budget, and then at the end of the quarter, the money's put back and then it's back to zero. And as long as at the end of the fiscal year, it's back to zero.
Could be an issue. I mean, with, cause their fiscal year ends, it's, you know, the second quarter.
It's a little bit of paperwork because you've got to show the money going out as salaries and then you're gonna get it back and then reimburse it to where you took it from. But, but I don't think we're, we're running that nip and tuck, are we, Carrie, on funds for making payments into departments?
No, I don't think so. Plus it's, it's, I think it works that way. I'm pretty sure it worked flawlessly with when Ed was doing it. That's why I'm not so by the question.
Well, the only reason I raise it now is because it would be more, um, because if compensation has gone up and we're talking now potentially two different positions. So.
But I think.
I just thought we should raise it before we charge ahead, but if you're comfortable then.
I hope it works. Sounds good plan to me.
Is it gonna be in this fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes, we hope so.
Okay, well, I, I mean, all in based on what you guys have budgeted, really? I would assume. Ed, you and I can have a conversation like tomorrow if you're in or something.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell you about it tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
I'm not sad.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
Mike Delahanty, Town First Constable.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What's that? Uh, listen, I'm not, uh, talking about you at all. Uh, I'm just gonna bring up one thing. Uh, Maggie had brought it up to me, uh, at the last meeting about that property on Gleason and Route Four, one eighteen Route Four. Um, I had talked to the landlord, uh, had a real good conversation with him. Um, he obviously understands, um, we've waited a real long time to see something happen up there. He totally understands that it is a nuisance property, um, this week. We'll see, but he says by next week, um, that property, that wall is gonna be fixed, which is a poured concrete wall, block wall. Um, any of the outstanding issues, uh, doors or any other concerns have been brought to his attention. He's going to address including painting it, cause there is some graffiti, he told me. So he wanted to try to make it, uh, as compliant as he possibly could. So I'm going to be there, uh, over the next week and next week. He totally understands this is his last occult warning before we move forward with the process, um, of the written notice and the hearing. So he trying to avoid it. I told him even this morning, uh, I followed up with him again that here it is. This is the last, last opportunity we've got before we move forward. That here it is, this is the last, last opportunity we've got before we move forward, uh. With it, with the ordinance, so keep you posted, um, and, but I'll be there as many days as possible to kind of keep his feet to the fire.
Good, thank you.
And I apologize, it's, it's been, it's gone on too long, and he understands that as well, but we'll see what happens.
Good money after that, there is nothing salvageable to that building.
Nope, nope.
It should have been leveled.
Agreed.
Made lawn, and put for sale sign. And, and you probably would do that right now, it's like, what are you gonna save there?
Yep, I understand, but if we can, but if we can, the risk, the risk is there, and we need to, need to take care of it, so. I'll keep you posted, hopefully, uh, this next meeting I'll have really, really good news, so. Stay tuned. You got it.
Thanks for hanging out with us.
Absolutely. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
It's a lot of paper.
Goodness, you've had a busy two, uh, busy month, we're doing them once a month now, right?
Correct, we missed the last month, because Lynn was on vacation, so we uh, she got it done for me now, so. So you can see our uh, I'll go over the section purchase, so caller calls. We had a hundred and sixty-four calls, uh. And sixty-five traffic stops. Probably benefit or thank JP for most of those uh, traffic stops. We have had a busy month. And I had a pursuit last week, ended up putting a stolen car out of Randolph, guy had a. Who was looking for it. Hoping he was getting it back, it was hanging out in Rutland, and lo and behold, it turned up at the Cortina. So.
I'm thinking now that's the first place you're gonna go look.
He's just like hanging a plate reader up there somewhere.
We used to have a plate reader, but there's so much, I'd have to hire two more people just to keep track of that information. Then if I wanted to look at the information, I need a search warrant to look at our own information that we've collected.
You.
So, we got rid of our plate reader, because it wasn't worth the cost. So that was one thing that happened, uh, yes, yesterday Ted picked up a guy who had a warrant for his arrest. That turned into, and that was at the Greenmount Plaza, and it ended at the Cortina. Um, I will say there was one gentleman who Ted asked for help. He actually helped, helped very much, so, and I'm getting assaulted in the process helping uh. Our deputy chief, and the gentleman now is in jail, lack of uh, fifteen thousand dollars cash bill, or sure. We spent a lot of time at the Cortina.
Okay.
Do you want, any questions on this section right?
No, just thanks to everyone who's been.
I have one other. I have uh, two granddaughters that are listening to me right now, and I told them I would say hello to Zena and Maverick. Because they wanted, they've been watching this, making sure that I would mention their names on TV, so.
Excellent, very good, so ladies hear that, okay?
What's that? You gotta watch our language then?
Yes, yes.
Don't want to talk about anything Ted's been investigating. Correct.
Okay. Then we have our comparison chart.
Yes. We're running neck and neck probably with uh, two thousand twenty-two, which was our busiest month, or busiest year.
Alrighty.
We're, we're twelve hundred calls right now, and it's only, just barely with the first year. For the entire town.
So, and it really hasn't gotten much better, has it?
No. No, it's not.
Double in January.
I think, I think if the, if the Cortina would take lessons from Bridge House and how to run a homeless shelter, or.
Yeah.
If they want to help people on what needs to happen. Uh, I'm pretty sure the state pays Stockton Security for twenty-four hour service, I don't know if they do twenty-four, I don't think he has the men, manpower to do it. And I don't. As far as like JP's talking about keeping the back door secured. If they were alarmed and secured, and there was someone there twenty-four seven says, no, kids outside, go to the front, go to the front. Make them go to the front, have alarms on the back, so that alarm goes off every time, wakes everybody up. They'd probably, I mean, it's on, it'd be annoying, you have to walk all that way to the front.
Those folks up on Woodstock Avenue made a believer out of you, haven't they?
Yeah, because, well, I resisted heavily.
Right, but.
And uh.
You know, and, and some of that, I, I, I know that's a well thought out process up there. But our concerns may have made sure that they did what they said.
And, and they have.
And, you know, that's, um. That, that's format of that model won't work at Cortina. Because it's, the building is not designed, and the. Property owner doesn't have the same commitment to bettering people's lives.
Yeah, they have a twenty-four seven person there.
Yeah.
They're accountable, someone's in the back parking lot, calling the wrecker, get rid of this car now. I've told them that they hardly involve us at all, if they have an issue, they call us, we take them.
You know, and, and that's a model that, that would be great, but, but like I said, the environment at Cortina doesn't. Make that type of situation work.
I think the word, uh, words of third world country. Looks like that, right, there's a officer in Rawlin City who is from a third world country, and he goes down there, yeah. That's what, this is what.
This is what I came from.
Yes, that's what he says.
So, I think, you know, we talked about it earlier, but we need to put a lot of pressure on those people in Montpelier that sat in this room. And told us a whole lot of stories, they like bedtime stories.
That's what I thought.
Well, that's on my list, so.
That's the only way we're gonna get anywhere. And if we don't get anywhere, I think it's.
I don't like doing business with the news, but we need to get it out there, we have to have them here again, and maybe we can get the people from. Channel three, or somebody wanna come and sit down and listen to this.
Think we will be seeing an article in seven days, I got an email today.
Four years of a lot of talk and not much else.
Yeah, um, I, I think I should tell you folks something, I know Mary's aware of it. Chris Loris is putting together a committee. To look into everything, because what is affecting us is also affecting them, and they're not feeling like. We're getting anywhere, um, with the people that own it, um, when you ask, when he, when the uh. Original owner was asked, he said, well, I don't own it, I sold it to my daughter. So when somebody said to him, well, isn't it an LLC, and he said, yes, and they said, um, oh. Well, are you part of the LLC, and he said, yes, he said, then you're an owner. So, you know, people are, people all over are fed up, and. So, Chris is trying to put together, the reason I was called is because. Um, I've got forty years of working with the homeless. Um, and so I agreed to, to consider it, I know we talked with Mary a little bit. And hopefully, something can be done. You know, um, I think. Their plan is to um, go back to the state and say. Why, how, how come, and, and we're sick of being told one thing and then it's never done, so. We'll see how that works out.
Okay, um, I did, actually to follow up on that, I did run into former mayor Loris at the library. Um, this afternoon, and the city. Um, has received a substantial grant to study homelessness in the area. And Chris wanted to make sure that Rutland Town was included, because of course of the, the Cortina, so. Um, that's um, the, the background a little bit of what Sharon is referring to, so. Um, they've already been in touch with Rutland Town, and they will be including us um, in the study. And maybe with some, you know, here's, here's where we go from here, and here's what needs to happen, so.
What Chris was really shocked with Mary was that, um. And, and I'm not bragging, so please understand this, but there isn't a person in this area. That's got forty years working with the homeless, as I do, and yet. Um, the mayor, the governor, nobody's called me, um, and, and he was concerned, he said. You haven't been called, I said, no, no, I haven't, and I said, but they don't want to hear, they, they don't want to hear. They promised stuff, and then there's no follow through, so. I guess it's time the people.
Just keep being annoying.
Um, anything else for our town police chief? We do, we do have a couple of things to bring up in executive session, do we have? Anything that we can bring up now from the, the.
CFAC portion.
The police committee did meet. Um, earlier, before the select board meeting, um, we did have. A representative from CFAC here, you'll recall, in the past, we have received a contract, and this is several years back. Uh, from CFAC to provide investigative services. Um, and to provide basically earmark, one of our officers or hire an officer for the position. Um, at the time, it was Ed Dumas before he, well, is, before he was full-time police chief here. Um, we are being asked to do that again, Matt and I met with um, Mary Nichols. The CFAC representative, and talked about. Um, the contract and what that would look like. There are a couple of moving parts here, one is she needs to apply for grant funds to um, provide for that, she's identified sources. That will provide um, sixty thousand and twenty thousand. Um, we have questions to her about, um, you know, can we, if we identify somebody. Um, and can, and that person, you know, is in the program uh, for a while and then leaves. Um, is there a withdrawal clause, and, and yes, there would be, so it was a lot of discussion like that. Um, in the past, this has been a good partnership, it provides us with an additional. Officer, um, and not really, but mostly dedicated to CFAC, is investigative services. So, um, did I summarize that?
Yeah, so I, I would uh, make a motion that the chief be. Authorized to proceed with interviewing a candidate to nominate to CFAC. For their review with hiring contingent on approved grants to cover the position.
Is there a second? Motion's seconded, any further discussion? We want to make sure that, um, that this person will be attached to our police department, but we need to make sure the grant funds are there. To pay the person, so that's our goal, Sharon, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion carries unanimously, so.
Thank you.
Proceed, thank you.
We're going to an executive session, but that was.
Yeah, I think we wanted to do, so we have, well, Ed is here and JP. And other members of our police department, before we take up Bill. Um, if we could do an executive session for personnel matters. And have these folks join us.
Will do the contract matter at the same.
And a contract matter at the same time.
I was just wondering how long Bill had, or if he had much.
I don't, well.
We've been through the packet, you, how much you have, Bill?
Not, not a, not a ton.
You're, you're gonna wait anyway. I don't know, we hashed it out.
You're gonna have to be here to shut this off, because those three rocket science here never can figure it out.
I just closed the thing.
Come back two days later and it's still recording.
I, I do a few things, it won't, it won't, they won't be major, but we need to talk a lot, so.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to go into executive session for a personnel and a contract matter, motions made? Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. And Sharon's aye, so. Um, executive session. Back on the record at, um, eight forty.
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Is there a motion?
I move that we authorize the chief, police chief to hire for a grant-funded directed patrol position.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? If none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, now back on the agenda, um, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Hi, Bill.
Did very well getting through the packet, all things in the packet, uh, in the orders should be the final invoice. Uh, for our service road documentation work, I have in my possession a very large number of electronic documents. With all of the everything we want to know about building a new road. Uh, they did all the sections from Aldis to uh, Feral Distributing, so it would be both. It's the complete project area, so.
Alright, what, what do we need to do?
Nothing.
Wow.
We, you, you signed, you signed to the orders, paying, paying them for the final amount of work, so it's all, it's all there.
I believe that money came out of the highway budget.
It came out of engineering services, yeah, yeah, so. So the last part was about eight thousand, uh, so we now have all of the information. We need to know.
And this documentation at this point would allow us probably to put this out to bid if we wanted.
I would imagine it's pretty, it's pretty thorough, there's cost estimates in there, I mean.
They cost estimates of about one point five million to do the complete project.
The whole, yeah, so, the whole thing from, to, to connect the two, to connect Feral Road to. This road that does not have a name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to take and. There's a couple of projects in town that I, when we have the highway committee meeting, once you can get Chris on board, we can meet. Twenty-nine, I want to talk about, um, would be some, see if there's some kind of funding, like. At one point, when this Grove Street was fixed from the town line up. Quarter mile there, where they put the curbs in and all that was done, that was a state funded project, the town didn't do that, the state came in to do that for. Making that a safer road, so we have that other project on Grove Street. And there's also this project down here in Simon, so I'm wondering if we should start seeing if, and Chris might be the guy to. Maybe there's some grant money we can get to do some of these projects.
Absolutely.
Think we should look around, you know.
And I don't know if there's even money, if, if with this service road, we're looking to improve. You know, we're, we're looking to increase the town's tax base, we're looking to get businesses down there, so I don't know if there's some funding that would help pay for that. Um, some way we could do it, but, because that seems to be a little bit less fun, money than what they were originally talking.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, um, but.
Okay.
But anyway, that's, that's great, I'm glad we finally got that finished and got that money.
Yeah, so it's there, and. I find, well, I'll look at it, I'll be happy to send it along. Um, I did go down to uh, the site visit with V-Trans at Cold River Road and Route Seven, and they all commented on how. Well, the crosswalks came out and worked, and we walked all the way around and looked at all the things and. Tested the buttons and everything, everything's working as it, as it should, so.
Okay, so we have this letter ready to go to V-Trans, and Sharon, when you come in to sign things, there's a letter in here. To V-Trans thanking them for their work on that. Old River Road Route Seven, so, thank you.
And also, and there is a letter for Angie. So I have those, those will be ready to go, uh, good, uh, I was. Following up with, with Stopman's Electric, we don't have their final invoice yet for the work downstairs, um, there was a little situation that. Our stuff is fine, um, they inadvertently took our generator transfer switch and the meter socket. And they don't know what happened to them. Uh, so, they have offered to either replace them for us, and we can. replace them for us and we can hang on to them or get credit for what they cost off of the work that was done to the building.
Is this something we need?
No. Well, not, not right away. The transfer switches, you know, i- is just, it's, it's.
They replace it, right? Had to put a bigger one.
Right. So, so, yes, yes. So if we ever had to buy them in the future, they're probably not going to be less expensive in the future. So if we owned them, we wouldn't have to buy them down the road, but we have to store them. And so.
No, and it's going to be the wrong size. So.
So they, they left the option up to us, uh, whether we wanted to get a credit. But the, I, he, because they'd asked me about, about getting rid of some of the bigger stuff. I said, leave it here. We'll take care of it. I said, we want those things. He's like, yeah, absolutely. And, and they all left and I, and I messaged a guy. I'm like, he's like, what do you mean they're not there? I'm like, they're not here. So he got home and he's like, the, the only place they would have gone was our warehouse. They're not the warehouse and
They walked.
They're not. Nobody knows where they are.
So we'll take a credit. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so we will prob- probably have their invoice for the, for the next board meeting for approval. So. Uh, on that note, uh, Ed Clark had been working with a company to provide us with an estimate for the project downstairs. About three weeks ago, he hadn't heard from them. So he was following up again. He's on vacation this week. I sent a message this morning asking if you heard anything. He's on, he's on vacation this week. So maybe next week they'll have an idea. We, we, it's just waiting for a company that does the estimating to do the estimating for us. And he's hoping it's.
Cause grant application for that municipal thing is in the fall. So we need the estimate to, okay.
It, he, it, he is, he's, he is working to get that and, and it's just waiting for this, this company to get through to him to, to take care of it. So. Uh, and I, I will not be here Thursday. I have some appointments I've got to, I've got to attend to. So I will not be here on Thursday. Um, and that's, uh, oh, I do have the things for Kevin's list if you wanted to.
Yes, please. I'll take that. I've, I've got quite a few here, but we'll cross check.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, you all saw the press release that Randall Smathers sent around. Um, the library is, um, and the city of Rutland, Rutland Free Library and the city of Rutland are looking at the possible new location. Um, which would locate services for the library, for city hall, for some state of Vermont agencies, all at the Asa Blumer Building, eighty-eight merchants row. So that is very early stages, um, but they do have some grant money to look into whether that's feasible. One before that you'll remember was a possible move to the College of St. Joseph's. And before that it was redevelopment of a uh, place at the pit.
Yeah.
Um, with uh, commercial library facilities and also I think some.
Then they were going to redo the building they're in. At one, weren't they trying to do that? Who actually owns that building?
Um, yeah, the city does.
The city does.
So the city taxpayers have to pay for its upkeep. We get charged for the operation of the library part. So it's actually a good deal.
Out of there, then the city could do something useful with that. I doubt it.
Well, they sold the old rec center.
The, the Asa Blumer building, that's a, um, state owned, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, that was.
So that's an FYI. We have no reason to take any position, but this usually stirs up some comments um, from certain, um, folks in town. So it may occur again.
Modernized building with
Yep.
Good facilities wouldn't be bad. Library is kind of important things.
Library is important. Parking could be an issue.
Yeah, but it's adjacent to the parking deck.
After the parking.
Yeah.
And it has access to the parking.
It does. It does. Okay. So we have the Rollin High School graduations stuff. We do have a letter. Rutland Town Scholarship Committee from Anna Galoppo. Thank you all very much for selecting me for your scholarship. It was a pleasant surprise. And it will help me achieve my educational goals. Once a townie, always a townie. Many thanks, Anna Galoppo. I did happen to mention during my brief remarks, go townies. So.
Representing us on the tennis courts and in the ice.
Um, there is also a prevent child abuse, um, request for a donation. We have donated in the past. And they're no longer offering to put the flamingos out, right?
That was, it was blue pinwheels.
Blue pinwheels.
In the last couple of years because our stock was sufficient to not need anymore.
Okay, very good. So what have we given in the past?
I think it was a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Make a similar donation.
Motion to make a hundred dollar donation to prevent child abuse. So second?
That fits.
Sharon's lighting up.
Oh, Cheryl, second from Cheryl. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I should be, okay.
About a minute and a half. But a minute.
It is.
It is. I've been on that.
No, a second and a half.
Second and a half.
A second.
Second and a half. Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Not a minute and a half.
Okay, um, sorry. I think I hopped ahead of you.
No, that's fine. You're, you're, you're good. I, um, I have every, I've, they cut all the things I had. So.
Okay, um. Do, do.
The highway truck was successfully sold. We are, we, we are not able to locate our title. So we are getting a replacement title for him. I don't, I don't understand.
No, that was the certificate for the stock was in.
That was the, uh, we went through, we went, we went through the uh, title folder and it wasn't there. So it may be worthwhile for each department head to just go through that folder and see what's there and what's not there and just get what's not there and be done with it. Cause.
State of Vermont now requires titles for all vehicles regardless of age.
Really?
Yes.
Fourteen year rules gone?
Yes.
That fourteen year rule is gone?
Yeah. It started last year.
Yeah.
Oh, that's why.
We don't, we don't pay registrations, but we do pay for lost documents. So.
Okay.
It, it, if we could just do, if we can kind of get this and, and have everybody go through and find it, and then we can submit one group of forms if we need to and just.
Do we, do we know where the title for the new five fifty is?
Dave's new truck? I think it's in, I think it's in that folder. Yeah, there, there's a lot.
Dave's two fifty that he just, or three fifty he just got, but the one before that.
I, I.
That came.
I wasn't looking for that when I was going through the folder. I was looking for.
You know, titles should really go in the town clerk's office.
They are.
They are.
Okay. They are. There's a folder, there's a folder in there.
Okay.
Yeah. But have everybody go through and make sure that all of their vehicles.
And I can guarantee you, you dig through that highway garage and a file cabinet up there somewhere tucked in a corner that you'll find that title.
Well, Dave, Dave did, did attempt to locate it and he was not successful. So.
But who knows?
Um, committee reports, we've reported on the police committee. Was there anything else we had from that?
Our highway was before the last meeting.
Well, they asked us to look at the possible change in the pension.
Oh, right.
Program. So we'll hear more on that later.
Yeah, um, it would give the police, well, first responders, but basically pretty much the police officers are the only ones in town who would qualify. It would increase the benefits to the police officers, but also of course the, the employer's contribution from the town. Um, and a decision has to be made by September thirtieth, when the state has to be notified or VEMR's has to be notified in order for this change to take effect if we want it. Um, for July first, twenty twenty-five. So we'll hear about this again. Um, but there is going to be a request to increase the benefits for the police department. Who knows? It could be one of those things where it makes working for us a little more attractive, but, um, it might also, I mean, there's a cost increase.
Could also be, yes. But it could also be a matter of competitiveness with other towns too, if other town, other municipalities are doing it already.
Right.
We should know that as well.
Do we have any other committee meetings?
We, um, not a meeting, but we had a, we had an invoice emailed to us from Teresa.
Oh.
I think it was within the amount that we had previously authorized. So I don't know if we need a vote on it. We just sent it to Carrie and say.
It's within the amount. So.
Now, I think.
We probably actually because it wasn't here in front of us. Well, no, wait a minute.
She only, you know, that does. I don't think she's, I don't know if she sent it to Carrie. I'm not sure why. I just noticed when I was looking back at my emails, it was just, I thought it was on it.
Yeah. Definitely more likely to get paid if it goes there.
So I'll forget. Would you send it over to Carrie, please?
Yeah, um. Now, I, I don't remember exactly how much we previously authorized, but I think probably she's used most of it.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to authorize an additional amount. There's going to be more work to do as we go through all the things that we had commented on for her to discuss with us. So I don't know.
We are going to have to have another.
We're in a new budget year. So I don't know if we need to authorize a specific amount or if we can just carry on and deal with it as it comes.
We're close to the end. We've gone through everything. We've knocked the thing down from by like nine pages, which for those of you who keep track of documents by pages, that's an accomplishment. But we still need to see, Teresa needs to put all of our comments and corrections in form. Then we need to have another meeting with her to make sure it's all the way we can recommend it to the full board for approval.
It's probably going to be multiple meetings.
Yeah, probably is. All right. So that's personnel.
We got through a lot of the questionable stuff, the stuff that we don't have answers for. So that's the important stuff.
Yeah.
Hopefully we've made some improvements.
Um, and I'm down to any other new items. We voted on the security camera expense. Yes, JP already took care of that and we signed it. Um, we've given him direction on the other.
Yep.
Um, we've done set the tax rate meeting. Um, and yeah, uh, could you make sure you warn it?
Yes.
Thank you. And we, the, the school reappraisal comments, I think were appropriate and.
I thought of our hands.
It, it is. It is. So anything else?
I did.
Okay.
Go ahead. Just comment, I did get in touch with somebody who's involved with, uh, eighth grade fundraising for next year for regarding the townwide celebration. So I told them, look, there's opportunities out there. If you want to, you know, put it, put it to the kids, get them, get a sign up, make sure you got a crew and then, uh, let me know and can hook them up with some work. I told them last year, it's basically, it was manning the food table, running food from the grill. So maybe monitoring the tractor rides, uh, having an attendant there to work those doors and whatnot.
Uh, Killington had let one of their members take their grill. They weren't going to be using it anymore. So their member has offered it to us for that day. So we're going to have that big grill for, for that day.
That's a huge one.
It is. It's.
Is that gas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It was hotter than hell to work it. Just saying.
Well, it, it, it's, it's cooked a lot of food.
Two years, two.
Two years ago. Yeah. Yeah.
So right now we have the fire, our fire department's grill and the rec department's grill.
Well, I was, I was thinking, we, we have rec, we have Mike's grill. We could leave the fire one at the fire station because it's down here and rather than just driving back and forth, we use Killington's and that would take the place of that. That's, that's okay.
It's kind of up to Sharon. Do we want to borrow Killington's fire department grill or use our own?
I, I, I mean, our own is. You know, I just. I mean, I don't, what do you think?
I, as I remember, it was a bigger one, but I remember it being very hot.
Yes. Anytime you're standing over a gas cooker, it's going to be hot.
Yeah, no, I mean, I did it the, I've done it other years too, but this one was very large and I remember doing some reaching and it was almost too big, but that's just me. Were we able to keep up with the demand for the two grills that we had, Sharon?
Yeah, we did. I mean, I wasn't there last year. I was in the hospital. So.
Oh, right. Okay. But the year before you were.
Yeah. And, and it was fine. We kept up with it. Well, nobody complained.
Okay. Were you cooking last year, Matt?
I was. We kept up pretty well. There was a little period where people were, were waiting for burgers.
Yeah.
But.
I'm gonna go find something to do. It'll be done in a little while.
Probably start cooking or, or Sharon, whoever's cooking can start earlier, I suppose. I mean.
Well, what about?
People will be hungry.
We brought a couple of the commercial shaping dishes. And we did, we start the hamburgers early and you can keep them warm and, and that. I've got a couple of those. There's a big, big commercial ones, you know, with the, with the, um, the candle stuff underneath just to keep it warm.
Yeah. I mean, I think people come and go from that event. So if you're there, if you happen to be there at, say, eleven o'clock and maybe it's a little bit early for lunch, but you see there's burgers, you're, you're like, I'll go grab one now. And so I don't think we have to worry about doing it too early, really.
This is all mine.
Yeah.
So, well, time to think about it.
Yeah.
Still, um.
The offer's there to us if we want.
Okay. Appreciate it. That's all I got. And I think there was a motion to adjourn by Joey, seconded by Sharon.
Yeah, that's good.
That's what I heard.
All in favor of the adjourning, please say aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Thank, thank you all. Have a great evening.